Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, August 5th. Let's call the meeting to order. Just a note, the meeting is being televised, it is going out in the public, I'm told, but the two TVs here are not, you know, are not functioning. So even though it's not on the screens here, it is being recorded and is going out. Let's call meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boyce, Budra?
Here.
Dole?
Here.
Crockett?
Here.
Geske?
Here.
We have a quorum. Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of the minutes. We have our minutes from the meeting from July 15th, the regular board meeting minutes from July 15th, 2024, that were included in everyone's packet, and hopefully everyone has had the opportunity to review them. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I would accept the motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve a mess presented by the clerk.
I made the motion.
Motion by Phillips.
I'll second.
Seconded by Budra. Roll call.
Phillips?
Yes.
Budra?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Crockett?
Obstein.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries. Public participation tonight, we have the first public commenter is Francine Fatima.
Good evening. Well, it's been a while. Now, we're into August, and what surprise do we get? I am directing this to the village board, of course, but I'm also directing it to Jacob Knox of the Mantino Chamber of Commerce. It's certainly a terrible thing for a business organization to be promoting a communist company by the name of Goshen in quite loud print on their advertisements. What in heaven's name drove anybody to do this? I mean, it's a slam at the community, putting a communist-run company in this delightful village. I'm just astonished. The Mantino Chamber of Commerce has a quote describing what they're about: "The foundational organization representing, uniting our members and community. Our mission is to support and advocate for the prosperity of our members." Well, of course, the members are members of the business community. I'm not a member of the business community. I'm just one of the plebes, one of the peons, as you probably would say. Not that we think of ourselves as peons. So what about the residents, citizens, living here? Is that not a concern of the Chamber of Commerce or this village board? What in heaven's name possesses the chamber, and with your approval, I'm sure, after all, you're the elected body for this village, who approved having Goshen written all over the advertisements like they're so accepted? They're communists. Does that now mean anything to anyone? It should. So Oktoberfest is coming, and with that awful news of Goshen being part of the presenters, I don't see what a terrible amount of people will be there. Although, sometimes people don't react until it's too late, and I hope it's not too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter is Ann Gates.
Good evening. The last time I was here, I read to you a forensic report on the Morris Ion Lithium Battery fire, but I did not get to mention to you that the AG and the EPA encouraged the homeowners to file suit against Superior Battery that was renting the building from an LLC. They also sued the fire department for not having known what was being kept in the building, and oddly enough, the Chinese man that owned Superior Battery couldn't be found. So they sued the fire department and they sued the fire chief. That's really sad, all because he didn't know what was going on. You guys signed on the dotted line to go forward with this plan for Goshen. Your names are in agreement for what this might potentially do to our community. So my question is, when it happens, when there is a catastrophic fire in this community, are you culpable? Or will you stand there and say, "Well, I didn't know. I just was told to sign the dotted line"? Are you culpable? Are you considering the danger that you're not only putting this community in, but especially our first responder? And I'm always going to stand for the first responders, whether they're in agreement or not. I care about them because they put their life on the line for me every single day, and I appreciate that. I wish you did. So let's go on. Goshen has communicated that they're not going to store the batteries in the building, so why be afraid? They're going to be in an ESS, which is an electrical storage system. Are you aware that the majority of the ESS across the United States as of this date have almost 75% had fires? There were two in particular I'd like to draw your attention to. Both of them were in Arizona, one surprise Arizona, one in Peoria. The standard procedures are not applicable, according to Mark McKinnon, a hazmat supervisor for both of those fires. He says the technology has outpaced the regulation, and as of now, there are no federal standards or regulations on ion lithium batteries in our nation. In the Peoria hazmat fire, four hazmat officers went in. Three seconds in, there was a mayday call. All four were found unconscious on the floor inside the ESS. They had succumbed to cyanide poisoning because it's skin permeable. Four from the surprise fire were overcome by the hydrogen cyanide as well. The chief that responded to the call was thrown 75 feet on fire. And he was in a burn unit and off work for 18 months. The other firefighter that was with him was thrown 75 feet from a steel plant, who had brain injury, broken bones, and burns. This is what you are bringing to our community. It's not a matter of this, gentlemen and ladies. It's a matter of time. I really ask you to reconsider and realize you are nothing more than a pawn for first book in this 2023 agenda. Why are you giving in thought? I strongly urge you, check with your lawyer about your culpability. It might change your mind.
Thank you. The next commenter is Sandy Chu.
Hello. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight until I received this letter from Lois. And in this letter, the Assessor's Newsletter, it includes this about the tax rebate. Thank the trustees when you see them. And I thought, why? Did you pay for it? Did you take this money out of your pocket? No. This is taxpayer funds. Sure, you didn't have to rebate it, but how many more lighted town signs do we really need? Or pickleball courts? If I heard it correctly, the money is from the sale when you sold us out for our water to Aqua, which is another fight we're having this, just this past week. So it's all our taxpayer funds, and it should have ended up with us anyway. I also didn't realize the level of contempt that this board has for its constituents, until Sam spoke, and then all of you, not all of you, you all weren't here that night, but until all of you jumped on the bandwagon and then, and all had your say. The contempt isn't the result of Goshen, though, is it? It's probably because you've always felt that you were better than, than any of us or better than the people who've actually elected you, for some reason. That's why you sold us out to Goshen and never listened to us when we, when we said, "No, stop it." You need to realize that the contempt that you feel for us is reciprocated at this point, and it's costing you the upcoming election, as well as any goodwill and any legacy that you think you might have had. That's gone. And now that you've sold or been part of the sale of Oktoberfest to the communist company, is there anything that you won't sell?
Thank you. Next commenter is George Riker.
Good evening. So I read a couple days ago, kind of surprised, well, it didn't really surprise me, because, but I read where Goshen's going to sponsor our Oktoberfest here. And I just wonder if you ran that by any veterans in Mantino. Did you go over to the veterans' home over there, ask them how they felt about it? Did you go to VFW over there for lunch or dinner and ask them how they felt about it? Because I imagine they probably would not be too happy about it. Now, I have the utmost respect for veterans. I wasn't a veteran. I missed a draft. But my father was in the service, and my grandfather and my great-grandfather were all in the service, and I respect what they did for this country. And what you're doing here by letting Goshen sponsor this is so disrespectful. I, I just don't get it, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public participation. Village President's Report. I have nothing on the agenda tonight. Village Administrator's Report, Mr. LaRocque.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item this evening, and it's a recognition for one of our long-term employees. I'll give it, turn it over to Chief Swinford for a presentation for Gary Bond.
Thank you, Chris, and Mayor. As many of you know, especially if you've had any animal issues in your life, Gary Bond has been our animal control officer for 25 years. Gary's been kind of an unsung hero with the village and the police department. We don't talk a lot about animal issues in our meeting because Gary does his job so well. He handles problems before they become problems, so you don't hear about them. Whether it's bats in your attic, or foxes in our swales, or snakes, or kittens, or lost dogs, Gary is available 24/7 to our officers and our residents. Gary deals with situations sometimes that aren't even really village problems, but he does it because he knows our residents need it, and it's very helpful to our police officers. He's a very important part of our police department, as well as the village, and tonight I'd like to recognize him for his service. So Gary, in grateful recognition of 25 years of service, of loyal and conscientious service as a member of the Mantino Police Department, congratulations and thank you.
I wasn't planning on saying very much. If you remember, five years ago, when I was up here, this thing went on for an eternity. But everybody knows, you know, we've done a lot, anything that we've needed. The village has never hesitated to not go ahead and buy it out, and for that I thank you, because there's a lot of times I know when things are kind of tough around on spending and that, but I really think hard before I ask to buy anything. So with that, I thank all of you for your support over the 25 years, and everybody here has been a great help. Any questions that I've asked, they do come up with the answer. So thank you for this presentation. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, 25 years, you know, it's gone by fast. The, you know, we're very lucky and blessed. I know I talked with a lot of the mayors from other communities, and they have had a number of different animal control people, and I know that a lot of them have consolidated and gone with the county, and, you know, that's, you know, that may or may not be working out. I, you know, I don't know, but we've always had the opportunity to do that, but we've always been lucky to have somebody that was here. When I talked with the chief and said, you know, he tells me about how Gary is available all the time, and, you know, he goes out, you know, mornings, noons, nighttime, all the time, you know, and takes care of all the issues, so much more so than we'd ever be able to have with any other organization. So we can't thank you enough, and, you know, I say, I've seen you out, you know, on Sundays and, you know, and early, early morning, you know, whatever the job takes, and we really appreciate it, and I say, are glad that you're, that you're doing it, and glad that you're going to continue to do it for as long as you can. So thank you very much, and congratulations on the 25 years.
Thank you, sir.
Phil, did you admit anything else?
That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Committee reports. Mr. Boyce is not here tonight. He does have a number of things on his agenda. I'll go through them. He has a, an old business. He doesn't have anything on the new business. He's got Resolution 2406, which is approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering services for the 2024 MFT resurfacing program. That's a program that, Jim, you want to comment a little bit about the MFT? That's actually underway right now.
Correct. Yeah, it's underway. I think a couple of these agreements, they've, we've kind of been waiting on. We've thrown a lot at Bruce here in the last six, six months, so he's catching up on paperwork right now. But yeah, MFT is underway. They got all the roads milled that they're going to mill. They're going to start patching tomorrow and Wednesday, start paving one road, I think, on Wednesday. It doesn't require any patching, and they should have all the rest of the roads paved this week. And then into next week, they're doing the township on North Spruce and South Cypress.
And this is a program that Bruce and Jim work on. I mean, I know you, you know, you drive the village and rate all the roads and rate all the streets, you know, 1 to 10, and then go through and decide which ones are the ones that are necessary to do and
Yep.
with the money that's allocated and money that's allowed. So it takes a lot of time, and we always try to get it done before the school year starts, and hopefully we'll be able to get that done again this year.
Pressure's on. Yep, trying to get it done.
Yeah. The next item he has is Resolution 2407, which is approving a professional service agreement, also with H.R. Green, in connection with providing professional engineering services for Legacy Park. This is to, you know, approve the agreement for them. They're the ones who designed, engineered the, the parking lot that is currently under construction and, you know, in being, being built right now. Also, Resolution 2408, which is approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering services for Thies Park Improvements Phase Two. That also is under construction now, and hopefully will be completed sometime in the next 60 days. And Resolution 2409 is approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering services for Legacy Park Phase Two. Do you want to talk a little bit about what they're doing out there?
Yeah, Phase Two is going to be a continuation of a path, a pier, and then doubling the size of the existing pond right now, so that'll be all dug out, and adding a, continuing the berm to the south over at Legacy Park as well. So it's going to be a lot of more, a lot of land movement and pond, and so.
Yeah, the original plan for Legacy Park, when we, when we first did it, what was it, 2011?
Before I started.
Twelve, okay.
Yeah, 2010.
Long time.
2010.
You know, we, we only did the, you know, the portion of the pond that, you know, we could do, we could do at the time, and we used that dirt to form the, the berm. Now we're completing the pond, which is going to be what, by twice as big as what it currently is?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's almost going to look kind of like three circles, almost like a Mickey Mouse head, speaking of, so it's almost one big center and then two offside.
And then it'll have a pier going out into the pond, a fishing pier. If you go out there now, you'll see there's a walking path that's being dug and built from the parking lot all the way over to that pond.
Correct.
And the walking path will be continuing around to, you know, to connect in with some of the other walking paths. So this is the agreement for the engineering for that. And those bids are going to be coming out when? Later on this month?
Yeah, I think that the design should be done, I think, this month, so it'll go out for bid end of this month, next month, and we'll communicate with the township, make sure they're on board with everything, and go from there.
Okay. Mr. Boyce has a public works committee meeting that's scheduled for Tuesday, August 27th, at 7:00 a.m. here in the village boardroom. Properties and Recreation, Mr. Budra.
I have no old business or new business. Unfortunately, on the square, one of the big trees just to the right, or the left of the zip lines, is kind of dying. It's got splits down the trunk, it's decaying. If you actually go up and look at it, you'll see through bolts, there's cables holding some of the branches up, and it's been inspected by a lot of arborists, and they all argue, or agree that it has to be taken down. So this tree will be taken down right after Oktoberfest. So the plan is, we're trying to, trying to brainstorm what we want to put there. Up on the screen is my email. If you have any ideas on kind of what you think should go up in the square, again, we're looking for something hopefully of some size to kind of pull the eyes. We have some ideas, but we'd like to hear from anyone in the village to like, kind of get some ideas on what we want to see there. We're looking probably something for something like child-friendly attraction to keep it going. So if you can email me, that'd be great, and then we'll kind of keep brainstorming ideas to try to get it done, or start picking a choice by the end of the year to get it done.
Yeah, it's really, it's going to change the appearance of that section, middle section of the square.
Definitely. We know how iconic the tree is, so we're trying to kind of pull, keep that iconic image on that, that park.
And as much as we don't want to take that, you know, take it down, you know, it's one of those things that we have to do. I know that, you know, there's another big tree there that's doing okay, we'll be able to leave that, but this one here is one of those things that's absolutely necessary, so we'd like to have something to fill that in. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any action items on the agenda tonight. My public safety meeting is Tuesday, also Tuesday, August 27th, 7:00 a.m. here at the village boardroom. And also, my safety tip is, with the corn crop now at its getting matured height in early August, it's a good time to review some safety tips for traveling in rural Mantino this time of year. We've all seen drivers speed on country roads and come to soft stops at rural intersections, or even blow through stop signs altogether. While this behavior is not as dangerous when fields are low and visibility is high, it can be deadly with tall corn limiting visibility until it's too late. Crops can also reduce visibility on the curving roads. The best way is to stay safe. Slow down, follow the speed limit. When corn is high on curves, reduce your speed. If you have a stop sign at an intersection, come to a complete stop. Even if you don't have a stop sign, don't assume others will stop. Slow down and make sure there is no cross traffic before proceeding into the intersection. Talk to young and inexperienced drivers. Inexperienced drivers may simply not know how much more dangerous it is to drive in the country with the corn up. Although harvest season is not upon us yet, farmers may still be moving machinery around ahead of fall. Watch out for tractors and other heavy equipment on hills, curves, and other areas where tall corn may limit visibility. As we head into harvest season, be practically cautious and drive defensive around agricultural workers, farm equipment, and grain trucks. Keep in mind, some of these vehicles will be operated by inexperienced drivers, or drivers who only operate this type of equipment once a year. Driver fatigue is also unfortunate reality at harvest. Also wanted to mention, tomorrow is the 2024 National Night Out, the 41st Annual National Night Out, and the 17th local event is being hosted by area law enforcement agencies, and that is at Perry Farm from 4 until dusk. I don't know, Chief Al, if you want to add anything to it.
Yeah, it's a real nice event they put on every year. All the police departments have booths down there, tons of giveaways, everything's free. Some backpacks, they give away bicycles, school supplies, all kinds of stuff they're giving out. Like I said, dinner's free, they have a live band afterwards, and it might have been fireworks after that. So real nice event.
So get there early to be able to get the, the backpacks or whatever, because a lot of times if you wait till after 5:00 or so, they're, they're gone. So, but the, our own neighbors.
Do you have a lot of Mantino police swag to pass out?
We have a lot.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started, I'm just looking out the window, and it's pouring, so if anybody's windows are down, you might want to go put those up. Under new business, we have nothing. Under planning and zoning, under new business, we have a consideration, a motion to approve the request by Kerwick Home Builders for a six-month extension to the variances at 175 Cure Drive, which is Lot 9 and 10, and I'll refer to Chris for some clarification.
Yeah, so a while back, we granted some variances for what is a vacant lot over there, and then also another lot that has a small church on it. That church has been abandoned for a number of years. Kerwick is in the process of purchasing those two lots to build two duplexes, so we granted him the variances he needed. Those expire after six months if you don't pull a permit or get started on the project. He's still working with the current owners to get a clear title on it, so he asked for the six-month extension so he can get that done and still get them purchased. He still has the same plan to build two duplexes over there. So we just need to give him that, that extension so that he can finish trying to get the, the title clear and get the properties purchased.
Has he done anything with, taken down the church? I haven't been over there lately.
No, because he doesn't own them yet. He's still got to get, he, he has not been able to close on the lots yet.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris. Our next planning and zoning committee meeting, which was scheduled for the 27th, has been canceled, and the planning commission meeting, which was scheduled for the 13th, has also been canceled. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you. Under new business, the first item I have is Resolution 2410, a resolution approving the sale of Surplus Real Estate, commonly known as 106 North Oak Street in Mantino, Illinois. This is a piece of property that we had purchased and knocked down a less attractive building there, right across from the school admin building, and we did that with the intent of cleaning up the area, which we have, but don't have any, this lot is really unbuildable with variances and setbacks, et cetera, so.
Chris, do you want to talk about how you went through the process and the appraisal, or how we came to?
Yeah, so we, we ordered an appraisal and got an appraisal on the property, and then we're, we're allowed to sell within a certain percentage of that appraisal. We were actually able to secure a little bit of money over and above what the appraisal was. Again, this is a lot that we really have no plans for. It's a small, you know, typical downtown Mantino lot. Originally, we thought maybe the school district would be interested in it, but they passed on that, and at this time, all we're doing is mowing it, so we figured it'd be good to go ahead and get rid of it. And the adjacent property owner is Jerry Kerwick. With him owning that lot next door and combining, after he purchases this one, that'll give him more room to be able to develop something on that property. His lot was kind of too small to do much, and this lot was too small to do much, but combined, they should be able to do some kind of a development on it. So, and this basically is taking a lot that is not on the tax rolls right now and putting it back on the tax rolls. So it's a win-win for the village. Next item is Ordinance 2408, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Fourth Amendment to a business development agreement between the village of Mantino and Taylor Ford related to sales tax generated from its location at 222 South Locust Street in Mantino. Again, Chris, I don't know if you can add anything to this, but it's a continuation of what we've been doing with them, and I think they're going to have some plans for improvements. Yeah, so we've done this for quite a few years, but when they asked for the renewal, one of the things that they've discussed or have been talking about over the last few years was doing some improvements to the building or the parking lot. They did purchase the old Homestar Bank Building to the south of them. That's eventually going to be torn down and turned into a car wash. So when this agreement came up, we, we tied some of those expectations to this agreement. So if they don't do the improvements, they won't get the tax rebates. This way, we can kind of ensure that they, they finally move forward with it. They've had some hiccups on, on getting it done, and if you go by there now, you can see where they're actually starting to install their car chargers, and that's, I think, about a half million dollar project. half-million-dollar project for those. But we also wanted to make sure that they improved the building and improved the property, and, you know, we're willing to give them the sales tax rebate for that as long as they get those, those projects done.
Okay. Next item is payment of bills, an amount of $1,135,345.19, which includes TIF bills from TIF III of $196.61. Bills authorized and paid between board cycle were $51,801.61. And our next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for August 27th, right here at 7:00 a.m., and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Geske. Mr. Phillips, General Government.
I have nothing on the agenda, Mayor.
Tonight, the items that we'll be voting on the consent agenda are as follows. And under old business, we have nothing. Under new business, we have Resolution 2406, approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering services for the 2024 MFT resurfacing program. Item number two is Resolution 2407, approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering service for Legacy Park Phase One. Item number three is Resolution 2408, approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering service for Thies Park Improvements Phase Two. Item number four is Resolution 2409, approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering service for Legacy Park Phase Two. Item number five is Resolution 2410, a resolution approving the sale of surplus real property, commonly known as 106 North Oak Street, Mantino, to Kerwick 5 LLC. Item number six is 2408, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Fourth Amendment to a business development agreement between the Village of Mantino and Taylor Ford, Mantino, related to the sales tax generated from its location at 222 South Locust Street, Mantino. Item number seven is a motion to approve the request by Kerwick Builders for a six-month extension to the variance at 175 Cure Drive, and a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $1,135,345.19, including TIF bills of $196.61. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to take a single roll call, vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read. Motion by Crockett.
Second.
Second by Dole. Roll call.
Crockett?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'd accept the motion to approve by unanimous vote the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read.
I make the motion.
Motion by Dole, second by Phillips. Roll call.
Dole?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Boudreaux, you have anything you want to comment on tonight?
Nope. School's coming up. If you know anyone that wants a tryout for the golf team, I am the golf coach, so I'll do a humble brag, and anyone in high school, intern high school, golf team, please. Thank you.
Mrs. Dole?
No, just kind of, you know, I'm, when we put together the Second Street Park year, many years ago, we had Hitchcock come up here and we had people invited in to look. And I remember having boards all over and people putting, posting notes about what they all wanted to see up on the area and different things, so that's good that.
Unfortunately, that was, you know, and the park's been there for now. We're on our second jumpy pillow. That's, you know, been over seven years, so all those things took place 10 years ago.
I know, and nobody remembers that we did do that.
Well, a lot of people weren't in the community 10 years ago to remember that.
So, we did. We had numerous meetings for people to come up here and give ideas for the park. In fact, we even, since then, since we cleaned off or demolished the apartment building, we also went to the schools and kind of put out a feeler for what the kids thought we should have up here, too. So, I mean, there's always trying to get ideas.
And now the kids can let CJ know at school what should go in place of the tree.
Yep, and that's all I have.
Mr. Crockett?
No comments.
Ms. Geske?
Only comment is, Gary, congratulations on 25 years, and hopefully we'll just order the plaque for 30 years and keep it going for.
That's all I have.
Mr. Phillips?
I agree. Thank you, Gary.
Happy birthday.
I have nothing further. I ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dole, second by Geske. Roll call.
Dole? Geske?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yeah.
Crockett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming, for watching.